I call this regular meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for April 23rd, 2024. This meeting is being recorded and is also available on our YouTube channel and on the Northern Berkshire Community Television Channel as well. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer, here. Bona.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Fitch.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
Alaskowitz.
Here.
Sapienza.
Here.
Shade.
Here.
Wilkinson.
Here.
Nine yeas.
Okay, we have a quorum. Please rise for a moment of silence. End the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands. In the name of our beloved and just. We've got to find a better place to put that. It's stuck against the wall.
If we move it there, I can't see you.
I know. I want to put it over here.
All right. So this is going to be approval of the minutes. Okay. All right. We get a motion to approve the March 26th, 2024 city council meeting minutes. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. This will be a roll call vote.
Blackmer, yes. Bona.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Fitch.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Alaskowitz.
Yes.
Sapienza.
Yes.
Shade, oh, I should have been doing your last. Wilkinson.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Motion to approve the April 9th, 2024 city council meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Council Wilkinson, Councilor Blackmer. Any discussion? Hearing none. This will be a roll call vote.
Blackmer, yes. Bona.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Fitch.
Yes.
Morrow, yes. Alaskowitz.
Yes.
Shade.
Yes.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Sapienza.
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Okay. Motion passes. All right. Hearing of visitors on the agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached the two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. And as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. Anybody would like to speak tonight? We need you to come up to the mic and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Paula Malloy, and I live on 18 Rickard Street, directly adjacent to the 935 State Road property. I am here today on behalf of my family and fellow neighborhood residents to express our concern regarding the zoning change for this location from residential to commercial. Earlier in the year, Ben Sensen from Taurus and his team approached us with their plans to transform the 935 State Road property, not only to include their new office space, but also a forthcoming structure that would house their future laundry and maintenance facilities. At the prior city planning council meeting that we attended a couple of weeks ago regarding this property, Ben stated that their plans no longer include this new structure. However, based on our prior experience with Taurus, we have seen firsthand how plans can change. When Taurus was constructed years ago, we attended city meetings regarding their plans. The final construction of the building differed considerably to what had been relayed to us, and we certainly had not anticipated the hotel being directly on top of us in our backyard. We are certainly not here today to dwell on the past, yet trying to raise the point as to how plans can change and how this zoning change could directly have an impact on us and the neighborhood atmosphere that we are currently used to. We purchased our home on Rickard Street 22 years ago, and part of what drew us to this location was the quiet and welcoming neighborhood that we thoroughly enjoy. In addition, we have made significant investment in our home to create a space that we enjoy coming home to, and certainly did not anticipate that in our future we could potentially be surrounded by additional commercial property. We are asking you today to please give much consideration to this zoning change, as once this property is commercially zoned, it will drastically change the current residential neighborhood environment that we have enjoyed for the past 22 years. And then I'd just like to close, if I'm able to, I just have a few pictures that I just kind of wanted to show and share, just to kind of show the proximity of how close, you know, the property is, like, this is our home, and then Taurus, as you can see, it's, you know, literally right on top of us.
Use the mic, please.
I'm sorry.
Use the mic.
You need to use the mic.
Yeah, and I'm going to need you to wrap that up, if you would.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Please step up to the mic, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Ted Briggs. I live at 23 Rickard Street, across the street from Paula Malloy, and I'm here to also concerns about the zoning change from residential, commercial at that property. One of the things that I'm concerned about is if that change goes through and the person decides to erase that house that's there, what sort of structure could be built there and what sort of businesses could be put into place there? As well as, is this going to create a domino effect of zoning changes from Rickard Street to Ashton?
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak for hearing of visitors? Okay. Hearing none, we will move on to the agenda. Council Paper Number 11,00826, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams Regarding Various Fees Established in the City Code, Referred Back to the Finance Committee With the Return Date of April 23rd, 2024. Councilor Bona, do you have an update for us?
Yeah, I am going to request again to postpone for two meetings. I was just handed some information. We thought before we finish this up, we would check with general code with what we thought was complete, just to, since they are going to be the ones that would be entering it and putting it in our ordinances, we felt getting their opinion on how it's arranged and should there be any advice coming back. And they actually came back, like I say, I was just handed this, we got this today. Substantial changes. I haven't had the time to look at them all, and some of them are in conflict with what we were guided from our solicitor, so I don't want to assume I'll bring this back in the next meeting, because I think between our committee having to go through this list and possibly, again, going back and forth maybe with the solicitor to confirm some of this, but this is an opinion, some of this is from their lawyers, you know, and again, we did meet with our solicitors to go over this, so there's sort of some conflict there. So I'm going to request that we postpone this for two meetings.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilor Wilkinson.
When will that return?
It'll be the second meeting of May.
May 28th.
May 28th?
May 28th, I believe. Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. This will be a roll call vote, please.
Blackmer, yes. Bona.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Fitch.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Alaskowitz.
Yes.
Shade.
Yes.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
Sapienza.
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Okay. Motion passes. Moving on, Council Paper Number 11,00826-1, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, Chapter 13, Articles 5 and 6, References to MGLs or Mass. General Laws Passed to a Second Reading at the Meeting of April 9th, 2024. Corrected for approval as amended to publish as required by law.
Move to adopt.
Okay.
Second.
Council Blackmer, Councilor Wilkinson. I'm going to have Councilor Fitch, do you have an update for us at all?
Yes, certainly. Unfortunately, after we discussed it in our last meeting, the city clerk and I noticed that there was an error citing Chapter 40 rather than Chapter 90, so we made that correction in here, and we took the opportunity as well to reconfigure it a little bit better, so hopefully this works better. It has the same function of adopting or of clarifying 20A and a half rather than 20A. There will be another ordinance in a moment to also accept Chapter 90, 20A and a half.
Okay. So, we already have a motion on this?
Yes.
Okay. Councilor Shade.
Yes. Because we have another ordinance coming up where we actually have to adopt 90A, and that will need to go to a second meeting, those need to be done at the same time, so this should be postponed a meeting, so that way we can send the other one to a second reading and vote on both of them together. We can't do this one first, we have to adopt before we make the ordinance procedurally.
Then I rescind my motion, and my motion is to continue to the next meeting, meeting of May 14th.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the changed motion? Hearing none. All right. This will be a roll call vote, please.
So when do you want to, when are we going to postpone to?
May 14th, although I won't be here.
May 14th?
Yep.
Okay.
Be the first meeting in May. Yep.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes, but I won't be at that meeting either.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Okay. Council Paper Number 12,191, A Communication from Councilor Shade Requesting the Local Department of Health Review the Rules and Regulations to Address the Storage of Garbage, Postponed for the Meeting of April 9th, 2024, With a Return Date of April 23rd, 2024. Councilor Blackmer, do you have any updates?
Yeah, I just have to finish it up, and there were some other things I needed to do with it, so since I won't be here on the 14th, I'd like to continue this to May 28th.
Okay, so we have a motion to postpone to the second meeting of May?
Second.
Okay. Councilor Alaskowitz? Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Council Paper Number 12,336-2, An Ordinance Amending Chapter Z Entitled "Zoning," Section 11.1.3, Entitled "Noise," Referred to the Planning Board for a Joint Meeting at the Meeting of February 13th, 2024. And let me-
Point of order, should we just add that into the Council Paper 12,336-2-A?
We can do that, yes.
Or make it after it, because it makes more sense to get the communication from Planner Mickic before we actually?
Yeah, let me read the communication.
Or we could just, without objection, move that other paper up.
Yeah, we can just move, yeah, it would be Council Paper to 11,336-2A. And Communication from City Council President Sapienza Presenting a Letter from Brian Mickic, Chairman of the North Adams Planning Board, Recommending City Council Adopt 12,336-2, An Ordinance Amending Chapter Z Entitled "Zoning," Section 11.1.3, Entitled "Noise." Going to file the communication without objection, and I will read you that communication. Dear Councilors, Attached, you will find a letter from Brian Mickic, Chairman of the North Adams Planning Board, Recommending that we adopt Council Paper 12,336-2, An Ordinance Amending Chapter Z Entitled "Zoning," Section 11.1.3, Entitled "Noise." And the letter says, RE 12,336-2, Dear President Sapienza, Please be advised that the North Adams Planning Board during the joint public hearing meeting on April 9th, 2024, voted to recommend that the North Adams City Council adopt 12,336-2, An Ordinance Amending Chapter Z Entitled "Zoning," Section 11.1.3, Entitled "Noise." Sincerely, Brian Mickic, Chairman of the North Adams Planning Board. And we get a motion on that.
And the communication or the ordinance?
Oh, I'm sorry, communication, yep.
So without objection, you're going to file it?
Yeah, so file the communication, yes.
Move to adopt.
Now we got to get into it, no. Now we have to do the words.
Now we go back to 11,336-2.
Move to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion?
No.
Sorry, I forgot.
Councilor Wilkinson.
I just want people to know that while we drive through this really fast, this was all brought out at the joint meeting of the Planning Board and the City Council in quite depth, so the decision to move forward was discussed thoroughly, not just, yeah, okay, so it was discussed thoroughly.
Any other comments? Let's have a roll call vote on that, please.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Council Paper Number 10,674-8, A Communication from City Council President Sapienza Presenting a Letter from Brian Mickic, Chairman of the North Adams Planning Board, Recommending a Zoning Map Amendment on State Road to the Revised Zoning Map of North Adams by Expanding and Extending Westerly to Rickard Street, the present B-2 zoning district on State Road, so as to rezone all of Assessor's Map 95, Lot 40, as B2. I will file the communication without objection, and I will read the letter from Chairman Mickic.
Point of order.
Yes.
I'm going to abstain from discussion and voting.
Okay, thank you.
Point of order?
Yes.
I'm also going to abstain.
Okay, so we have two abstentions?
Yep. You, depends on how to vote those, you still have a second.
Okay. All right, so the communication from Chairman Mickic, RE Petition of Centerville Sticks LLC to amend the zoning map by expanding and extending Westerly to Rickard Street, the present B2 district on State Road, so as to rezone all of Assessor's Map 95, Lot 40, as Zone District B2. Dear President Sapienza, Please be advised that the North Adams Planning Board during the joint public hearing meeting on April 9th, 2024, voted to recommend that the North Adams City Council adopt the petition of Centerville Sticks LLC to amend the zoning map by expanding and extending Westerly to Rickard Street, the present B2 district on State Road, so as to rezone all of Assessor's Map 95, Lot 40, as Zone District B2. Sincerely, Brian Mickic, Chairman, North Adams Planning Board. Okay, Councilor Bona?
For clarification, this requires two-thirds.
It does. Council Blackmer?
Well, if it does require two-thirds, just a full council, keep in mind abstentions are counted basically as noes.
Okay.
Clarification, that's the communication.
Right.
So-
But I'm talking on the final vote.
And that would-
So if they're abstaining now, they will have to abstain later.
Same, and that was my next, when we get to the actual ordinance, I have comment on that.
Okay. File the communication, and going on to Council Paper Number 10,674-8, An Ordinance Amending the Revised Zoning Map of North Adams by Expanding and Extending Westerly to Rickard Street, the present B2 zoning district on State Road, so as to rezone all of Assessor's Map 95, Lot 40, as B2. And this has to, we need a motion to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law?
So moved.
Second.
Council Blackmer?
It doesn't just need it to, it needs six affirmative votes, and since then the 14th, we are already down two and maybe more, plus an abstention, I would suggest that we actually bring this back for the 28th, if that's, if anybody knows they have a conflict. It'd be nice to have a full council to discuss and vote on this.
Okay.
I guess is my, when we make the final. Does anybody have a conflict at this point that they know of? For the 28th?
Oh, for the 20, not for the date, I thought, for the article.
Yeah, I'm just looking to see, hopefully we could have seven people to discuss and vote.
In my case, I would need a ruling as to whether there's a conflict or not. I've always known in the past, if you think there may be a chance for a conflict, then you should abstain. However, my conflict may not be direct with Centerville Sticks, but one of its principles, so therefore, I would have to get a ruling on whether I am in conflict or not.
Okay. Through the chair.
So we do have some-
That does give you time to contact state ethics.
Yeah, oh, no. Actually, I'd love to vote for this, but I, just due diligence, that's all.
We do have Councilor Fitch on the phone, so we do have seven councilors present.
No, I'm not talking about this, I'm talking about the second meeting, the meeting where we actually adopt it. We don't need a supermajority, we don't need a two-thirds to-
We don't need a supermajority.
-to pass to a second reading, we need it to adopt it.
Right.
So I'm just hoping that, at least if we start with nine on the 28th, and we have to take two out, that still gives us seven councilors to have a discussion and a vote.
Okay.
Is what I'm getting at, because I cannot be here the 14th.
Okay. Council Bona?
So typically, where I was going is when you started, when you abstained at the beginning, you usually have to abstain all the way through. However, I believe in Council Wilkinson's case, he's abstaining at this point because he's unsure, but it should still make it through, but if not, that's one thing, but by the next meeting, you may find that you didn't need to.
I believe I don't need to, however, again, I've been taught in the past, if you think there might be a conflict, then you should abstain.
But I'm saying that you can abstain tonight, but you may find that changes, and you can change your-
Definitely investigate that. I'd like to participate.
So we have a motion on the floor to postpone this to the May 28th meeting?
Pass to a second reading and publish as required by law, and bring back on the May 28th.
Okay. To pass to a second reading and publish as required by law, or post as municipal bulletin, and bring this back on May 28th. Councilor Shade?
I have serious reservations about making this change, and I believe we should get a legal opinion from our solicitor before making such a move, because I still see this as spot zoning. We are taking one particular lot of residential land and changing it over. It's one lot in a neighborhood, that is the definition of spot zoning. So I still see that as spot zoning, which is not allowed, and I don't feel comfortable voting on this until we have an opinion from the solicitor telling us otherwise.
Council Blackmer?
Yeah, another reason to bring it back on the 28th.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law, and to bring this back on May 28th.
With a legal opinion.
With a legal opinion.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Second.
We already-
We already had a second.
We already had it.
We did.
I already made a motion.
Well, the amendment would be-
Oh, okay, vote on the amendment.
Voting on the amendment, right, yeah, so we're voting on the amendment. Okay, roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Yes. Bona?
Yes.
Green, you are-
Abstaining.
Abstaining. Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Councilor Wilkinson, you are abstaining. And Sapienza?
Yes.
So we have seven yeas.
Okay.
Now we need to vote on the-
Now we need to vote on passing to a second reading.
As amended.
Okay.
As-
Voting to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law?
As amended. As amended?
As amended.
As amended, yeah.
As amended. Motion?
Motion's main.
Okay, and second, we have a second, okay. Roll call vote, please.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Green?
Abstain.
Abstain. Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
No.
Wilkinson?
Abstained.
Sapienza?
No.
No. Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five.
It doesn't need a supermajority to go forward, to pass to a second reading.
It's when we do the second reading, then we need the supermajority.
Yeah, it needs it on adoption.
Yep.
Five yeas.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Who's that one?
All right. Council Paper 11,00826-2, An Order Adopting the Acceptance of Part 1, Title 14, Chapter 90, Section 28 and 1/2 of the Massachusetts General Laws. And we have to, motion to pass to a second reading as published and published as required by law?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Council Blackmer, Councilor Shade, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Motion passes. Okay. Okay, 36, we've already done that. Okay. Licenses, we have no items on the agenda tonight, so I'll move to open forum, open forum. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached the two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended, and as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties, please refrain from any personal attacks. So if you'd like to speak, please step up to the mic, state your name and address for Please step up, Mr. Smith.
I'm Robert Smith, ed. 163, Moore Street. This idea about hearing the councils is very essential for people who come in and sit in the gallery here. There are times I can't understand what any particular council is saying. Now, we did test, we will back a better hearing system for the general public, and we still have an issue. We need to get a better system here where the public can hear everything the councils are saying, not only that, so that other people in the public sector can listen to the other, kind of, the other people who are here. So, let's get to work on making that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir, please step up to the mic, name and address for the record.
Brian Griffin, 95 Church Street, Apartment 2. And I do a lot of walking, sometimes early in the morning, sometimes after work, and I, I notice on a lot of sidewalks, there's a lot of raised spots, if you're not paying attention, you could, somebody could easily trip over that, over them, and like some spots where there's not like a lot of lighting, stuff like that, where people walk around like neighborhoods and stuff like that. Just wondering if there's any plans, or if there has been plans in the work for protecting some of those, and maybe flattening out some of the sidewalks, so it's much smoother for people doing walks around like Main Street, and around some of the side streets around by the college and stuff, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Hi, Curran's 1413 Mass Ave. I just wanted to maybe just ask a clarifying question in regard to the zoning item earlier, and to address Counselor Shade's issue about the spot zoning. It's just perhaps the question that, all the, and, and, this option is the only option, this rezoning option, to our knowledge, is the only option available to us to be able to do anything with that parcel, as we had addressed with, you know, our neighbors, that based on their feedback, we changed our plans and, and limited what we want to do to just be able to have offices inside the existing house, with some limited modifications to the house. If there is another mechanism that is more restrictive, because it seems that the concerns are more, what is this set the stage for in the future? If there is a more restrictive mechanism that would only allow us to do those offices in that building, we'd love to know what that mechanism is. The zoning board is not able to grant use variances, and so, based on our understanding of the, of the, of how the city ordinances are written, this is like our only option is to get it rezoned, but if, if, during those conversations and in the upcoming weeks, if something else can be explored so that that kind of meets all of our needs, protects against future, you know, God knows what use, but could allow us to have safe places for our growing staff to work, so we can continue to grow our business and make some more jobs here, that would be a great middle ground option, but I just don't know what that is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, moving on. Our mayor is not here tonight, so we do not have any updates from her, we'll move on to committee reports and minutes, please. Liaison updates. Counselor Concerns and Correspondence, Counselor Blackmer.
Since we have five weeks before the second meeting, because we're in that, that three-week between this, before the next meeting, I would, could I make a suggestion that we actually get the legal opinion on the ordinance before we actually publish it, so that if there's a problem, we're saving some money? It's a municipal bulletin, so it probably doesn't matter, right? In addition to that, when you send out the legal, asking for the legal opinion, could you also ask, as Mr. Curran's mentioned, is there another option to restrict it in a way that would restrict it just for office use only, or something similar? If there's any way to do that, if the other, if that would make everybody happy, if you could just kind of add that into the request?
Okay. Anybody else? Counselor Morrow.
Just something that's happening this weekend is the Roots Teen Center Annual Fundraising Gala, and that's Saturday, April 27, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. It's going to be at the Norrad Mill at 3 West, I believe, and there's going to be performers, an art show, dinner, and auction, the tickets are $55, but I believe there are some scholarship tickets if need be, and then, if you want any more information, the website is rootsteencenter.org.
Hey, thank you. Anybody else?
Counselor Sapienza, can I say something?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Fitch.
Yeah, thank you. I just want, I picked up on what Robert Smith was saying about the technology in the room, and I, I agree, we're in desperate need of an upgrade, and I know Mayor Massey isn't there right now to speak to this, but I just really hope that this is prioritized sooner than later. It's my understanding that this is out of city council's hands, this is on the administration to keep our building updated, and it is far behind, in many ways, of course, but this is one of the primary public-facing venues that we have in our city, and it's far behind the time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, and just to add to that, to Mr. Smith's comment, from what I understand, a technology upgrade is part of a larger package, which not, would not only include just an audio system here in the council chambers, but an improved system to be able to stream to YouTube and to make it easier to access the meeting, to view the meeting from remote locations, and right now, the system that we have, as you can see, we've got wires strung everywhere. A, an audio system, the one that we tested back last summer, that was a temporary setup, it did work well, but we can't have wires strung through the council chambers, so a professional installation. I believe there was some type of grant, and I, don't quote me on this, because the mayor was in the process of working with the IT people and trying to develop some technology upgrades for this room, and agreed, we do need some technology upgrades, because this room hasn't been updated in a long time, so. Counselor Wilkinson.
Why does it have to be a package? They're working on upgrading this room. I know they're waiting to put a package in the budget, which is forthcoming, I believe, in a couple of months. I've seen the city spend a lot of money on a lot of different things. Let's just upgrade it. Let's just do it. Why do we get tired of people stalling, stalling, stalling? We need it? Hey, if there was a broken piece of glass or something in this building, it would be fixed. Why can't we just upgrade now? Just personal opinion.
Thank you. Counselor Blackmer.
Point of order, this item is not on the agenda, we really should limit our comments-
We should limit our-
Stop the discussion.
Okay. All right, anybody else?
It was my opinion, it wasn't a discussion.
Well, thank you for your opinion.
Thank you. Thank you for having me have it.
Okay. At this point, I'll-
Sapienza?
Yes, Counselor Fitch.
Thank you for being open to dialing me in a few minutes.
All right, thank you, sir, I appreciate you being able to join us tonight, and at that point, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you, everybody.